I will call with me, I will say your calls are worth. And. The pledge of allegiance. Sam, when you're in the pledge of allegiance, so then.
Sure. The pledge of allegiance. Okay. So it's a twenty five. And truly, we have to say that just not even. The down into this one. We're looking at justice.
I want him, roll call.
Duncanson.
Present.
Dan Summer. Thompson, yes. Ben Barkum. Elkin.
Here.
Flannel.
Yeah.
Manor.
Here.
Very good. And the first item is public comments. Consent agenda. Nice goal, we gotta do that too.
Yep.
Um, so if you all want to think about what you wanna say. Are there any motion to approve the consent items?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda items, including the city council meeting from May first, the city council meeting from May fifteenth, arts parks and recreation from April eighteenth, airport commission from April twenty ninth, airport commission from May sixth, plan commission from May fourteenth, plan commission from May thirtieth, joint review board from May twenty first, personnel committee from May fourteenth, finance commission from May fourteenth, and public safety commission from May fourteenth, all happening in two thousand and twenty four.
I'll second it if I don't have to repeat any. Your motions may be seconded, you can. You know what, the council has been busy the last month, so lots of things. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Of course. Now we're ready for public comment. My laws. Go ahead. Where am I, Officer Sam Longley? Well, I don't know how many of you met Sam, but. He's been riding the car here for what, a week?
Yes.
A week?
Yep.
Very good. And. And so this is family. Good. Glad to have you here. The attention to Taylor, don't shoot.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Sam Mahoney.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution.
With the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
The charter laws.
Charter laws.
And ordinances of the city of Amherst.
Charter laws and ordinances of the city of Amherst.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the Amherst Police Department.
Of the Amherst Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As police officer.
As police officer.
For the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
And mom. So, mom's gonna pin the badge on. No, really.
Awesome.
See if you can bleed. There you go. There you go. That's a quick. You wanna say at that point in time, the rest of the council is gonna give them all the fun, too. That's okay. All right. I'll forward it. All right.
And Dr. Right, need to stay.
I, I told you. Sure, sure, so. Okay, I am number three, this is from ten twenty twenty four. And Dr. Citizen Participation Plan.
Good evening. I'll just come up here, cause I think I have the next.
So.
Is that why I don't? So. This is some participation plan, you already kind of have a plan, um, that you adopted with your twenty nineteen city population application. Um, they have since updated the plan, so. Every time they update it, we just read off, because of your finding that way, recovered on all bases, um, a few things that changed were. They adjusted the second public hearing, um, to specify when it could be there. If you get the grant and then. They addressed, um, changing the address for complaints, so that's all that really changed in plans. Um, we're just updating it to comply with, we knew a standard that that was released.
I think I watched the resolution ten dash twenty four, uh, the. That citizen participation plan.
And seconding to adopt resolution ten twenty twenty four. So, citizen participation plan for the C B G grant. And we'll start on that. So, any further discussion? Wrong call vote.
Duncanson.
Yes.
Then Summer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ben Barkum.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
Flannel.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Oh, and number four is the party for citizen, for, uh, citizen participation plan that we just talked about. Round again, yeah.
So for as long as you have to make a motion to open the public.
Okay, so. Need a motion.
A second motion.
Uh, actually, I'm seconding to, in the public hearing for citizen participation. While the C B, C B G grant application. All in favor say aye. I think about it. Of course. All right.
All right, um.
I don't use the public before having.
Through everything, um, there'll be a few different, um, times that. The council will give any opinions as well as the public, but there's a few items I have to hit on first, um, so. The reason I'm having this public hearing is because you're applying for C B G. It's required every time you apply for C B G. Gives the public and the council an opportunity to learn a little bit about C B G, because all the different programs that encompasses under C B G. And then it gives the council and the public an opportunity to share their opinion on if they see any needs for, um, the programs that we talk about tonight. So, I'll just give a basic overview. Of C B G, what it is, um, and then we'll have a few items where we'll help the council or the public if they have a need. Funds. So, first we'll talk about. The program itself, it was enacted, um, through Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy four. It's housed under the Wisconsin Department of Administration, um, and funds have been there since nineteen eighty two, and it still has the benefit L M I, low to moderate income. So it targets funding areas of greatest need for housing, public facilities, and economic development. Um, identification of potential funding, historically D O A has had roughly twenty eight million dollars. Annually across all programs, we'll talk about all the programs later on here, um, but. Generally that covers water, sewer, storm sewer, emergency infrastructure, amount development, job creation. For the specific C B G program you are applying for, that is C B G planning, um, and that covers two dollars for one of your dollars up to a max of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that is the planning grant. Next, a few of the eligible activities under C B G, there is economic development. Which is low interest loans to businesses in exchange for job creation, there's public facilities, which is water facilities, mains, loopings, extensions, treatment plants, hydrants, things like that, um, that's what you applied for in twenty nineteen for Keller Avenue. Um, there's public facilities for economic development, which is business and industrial life. Um, C B G planning, that's what you're currently applying for, for your core and comprehensive plan update. C B G housing, which is rehab to owner occupied and renter occupied unit that qualifies as L M I. Um, and then there was a C B G COVID round, uh. There was a second one that just came out, but it was relevant to. Each constructing like, like a little, um, apartment complex into. So. Uh, they kind of changed what the need is for every time they release that. So those were the eligible activities under C B G itself, um. Next, we'll jump into the presentation of identified community development housing needs. Um, and at this time, we'll open it up to the council if you see any means, um, for community development in the city or housing needs.
This, this basically, one of. Real property, right?
Um, each program funds something different, so, um. Like the public facilities one, that's infrastructure, but for the most part has to be community wide, that's it. Um, at least for the, unless you're doing an income survey, you're qualified neighborhood. Um, so it kind of depends on what category we will be under, but the housing one specifically, um, is a program that is. A part of a grant to owner occupied renters that qualify as L M I, under HUD's category of L M I, per family household. So.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Just, I just for clarification for myself and maybe the audience, um, this, the intention of our application for this is to assist in the development. And the housing project or the sewer plant?
Neither.
Neither.
Yep, C B G planning is for the, the corp, so the conference of older recreation plan.
Okay.
And for updating your comp plan. You would be caught with that, but, um, there was this opportunity to apply for a grant and get, um, two thirds of it paid for by C B G. So that's what this is for.
Okay, cause I know our timing was off on. On this for that other purpose, so.
For the.
So it was for, for the sewer plant.
Okay.
So, I just wanna clarify.
There's nothing else from the council, then we would open it up to the public if they have any, on any of the programs that we discussed.
Yeah, question, yeah, is that fifty thousand amount for every program or just ones for all of them, is it all or just for each one?
Yeah, that's a great question, the fifty thousand max is for the planning program specifically. So the, the public facilities program is a maximum million dollar grant, so, okay, yeah, so each program is different. Yeah.
So then, remain that be able to be considered for a new development in the city management?
Um, it, it depends on what you're looking at, um. But there's, um, a development that's gonna occur, that's gonna, you know, be economic development involved, and it creates more than fifty jobs, that would be something that could be applied for, and I think that's also a million dollar grant, so. Um, it has to specify under one of the programs and meet all the requirements, but potentially, yes. Right. I will move on.
I want to close.
No, I'm still on.
Okay, I'm just checking, can you give us a little bit to hear that?
Yeah. Presentation of activities performed for C B G, we kind of covered, but that is for the core of the conference about the recreation plan and for updating your, um, your conference. Um. Next, we're gonna review any potential residential or non-residential business displacement as a result of C B G activities. Um, this is an item we're required to cover, you won't be displacing anybody. Then, so the last item I have on here is any resident input regarding the proposed projects, um, or any other C B G activities, and like I said, the proposed project is for, um, your court, I mean, I'll take your. Suppose you're just documents, um, that the city will be updating. There's nothing else, that's all I have. For the phone here.
Any group comments from the public? Um, this, over comment.
My second.
Also, I'm moving second before the public comment portion of the. Um, I was favor say aye. Of course. So. And not everyone. It was authorized on the current matching funds for the C B G. Application.
Yes, um, so this is also a required resolution that they're, um, as you adopt prior to applying, just saying that. You will develop the matching fund portion, um, of the grant, so. In your resolution, the matching funds portion is equal to two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, and that would equal a little over forty five thousand dollars for.
Questions?
Um, is this something that we thinking about going into twenty twenty four, I don't remember. Budgeted for or not?
Um, no, but, but, I, I am going to take it out of our TIF flowers.
Okay.
Because we can see if dollars for that, so this was not. Something that was budgeted.
Basically, if I understand it right, this, this plan. Uh, if it comes to fruition, we'll do, we'll leave the city to qualify for. Fairly decent grant probably to, uh, for our recreation facilities.
Right, one of the plans your, or your upper recreation plan, that will allow you to apply for stewardship through P A. So, if you have all of that, you can apply.
And which, you know, we. Also we'll use the. Those dollars.
Yeah.
For that, so.
And I'll, I will also say that updating your comprehensive plan will also set you up better for funding in the future. Having an outdated plan with what the city plans to do in the future, a lot of funding programs are giving additional points if you, if they see they can find out for the future that you were. So.
This was basically a hundred percent required before we're going to apply for any grant funds to, for our personal, like, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Plans, so.
I totally get that, I just wanna make sure we know where the matching money is coming from, so.
Okay. My motion for, going to respond. What is your priority?
Motion to approve resolution eleven dash twenty twenty four, authorizing the resolution to commit matching funds, um, to secure. But, yeah. Um. By to commit to matching funds for the C B G grant, uh, amount total of twenty two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars.
Putting a motion, we have the second, uh, resolution eleven twenty twenty four, to commit matching funds for the C B G application. And the members with the twenty two thousand five hundred dollars. Any further questions? All in favor say aye. I can. Those, so. Item six, twenty twenty four and twelve twenty twenty four, authorization for submission of the C B G grant application.
You need to cover that acronym. Oh, well, this resolution is just, I give the mayor this, I have on. All the requirements, we're seeking to. Authorizing the city and so on, so it's gonna be application to that.
I make a motion to approve resolution twelve twenty twenty four, authorizing the submission of the C B G grant application.
One second.
Motion, second, give, uh, uh, resolution for twelve twenty twenty four, any further questions? Comments? All in favor, certified by saying aye. I, those. So.
Thank you.
Be careful. All right, item seven, the partners never reports, marketing and promotions report. I don't. Who else was yours?
I don't know first.
Hello, everybody, um, this is my report for June fifth, I'm gonna start off with the wastewater treatment, and, but, um, talk with the coordinator, and we said it would be really nice to get updates, and the only one that I. Is, um, the building finance headbutt submitted. And there was a few tweaks that we had in use to our plans, so just seeing that's kind of right, and because we have to make some changes. And, um, so that's what I'm going to run for that right now. The conference plan, the board door plan, like Daniel was talking about previously, uh, we're in the process to apply for funding, and thank you for giving us the approval to do that. Um, so now we can get forward with the, all the plans for that. Uh, emergency operations plan, um, clearly, everybody's saying that for the COVID notification system, hopefully nothing will not today for that, but. If something does, it should be good, everybody on. So, now we're done on our website, and. You got a new one to kind of attack on the site. Um, hotel developments, um, we, we have an interest in hotel development, um. I don't wanna say is anyone, but you don't know who it is, anyway, I wanted to continue to meet with him and discuss plans to move on with the hospital hotel on his property, so. Keep your eyes on the factors. Um, housing development, we're working on a few developments for housing that's a little bit, um, information is going to be forthcoming at future meetings, and. We can talk. It is, exactly. Um, we've got the city managers administrators conference coming up, and I'm going to be attending that, it's June nineteenth through the twenty first. And it's a twice yearly training that I tend to kind of bring them, I mean, training to, and standards that are needed to do in the administration. So, it's very valuable. Um, budget capital improvement plan, and myself, staff, and department has are working on putting capital expenditures together as part of our capital improvement plan, uh, we should have a good plan on coming months. And I say months, but it's. Short months, it's not very long, you know, uh, to propose the budget and, yeah. That being said, we're putting, we're putting more needs for that purpose as well into the budget, and we keep everybody apprised and finding it's what we do, so. Um, we're doing, um, University of Wisconsin, World Entrepreneurial Venture, don't say that too fast. By myself along with other individuals and one of them, Lee Roger, he's sitting. Um, we comprise of the community leadership team, and we'll be working with U W Wisconsin for the rev program, that's what it's called. And we've got two meetings coming up the next few months to kick off the program, and it's a three year program, so, um, it's very valuable, we work with a trained coach. And we work one on one with us to give us the tools to identify and expand, um, the leadership base to support entrepreneurial activity in the city, now in the future, so. It should be pretty valuable. And I'm gonna say this again, lastly, um, I want to discuss a political signage that's here in my specifically presidential. Um, we've been advised by legal counsel that we can't regulate that, free speech, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they don't obstruct vision, trying to hold in a non-impoverished property, cannot regulate them, free speech per laws. Um, we've got a particular flag that. Ben was put up, so I wanted to tell everybody, we can remove it, um, but I want people to know that I'm cognizant of it, and. You know, we're, I want people to know that are listening, they could cover up the swear words on it or take it down. Or anything like that, that's all I can say. So, anyway, thanks for listening. Any question?
Really, I'll be, um. Find that's available from Port County.
Yes, I sent in all the information that I needed to, that they were waiting on, and he said that's exactly what he needed, and that was two days ago, so. I finally got all the information.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's pretty positive.
Cool.
Yep.
Okay, how about the library?
All right. Gotta read the computer today, looking if we don't have power for. Oh, yeah. Hi, everyone. Uh, since we last met, the library has held thirty three programs with eight hundred and eighty eight people in attendance. Of those, which we had a hundred and eighty four intermediate school students, one hundred and ninety five elementary school students, and ninety middle school students. They all got their annual spring, walked through the library, reminding them of what they can do in the summer when they can. Uh, all related to that, it's the proof week of our reading program, we had a kickoff interactive science program, explosions were had, things were. Fizzed and popped everywhere, it was really fun, the kids had a really good time. The other really big news is that the book locker is being delivered tomorrow, so it can be delivered, installed, we have to see how long it'll take before everything is fully set up and ready to reveal to the public, but. Look for an invitation to some sort of ribbon cutting in your inboxes, because we wanna make a little, a little to do about it, because it's really big people that are town the size and doing something that's cool. Um, little bit of negative news, the HVAC in the library space is having trouble, had a flow where Jeff and Ross are working on it. It is not pulling the humidity out of the air at the level we need it to be. It's been up to sixty eight percent humidity, I know this week was extraordinary with rain and heat, but even last summer was that. Looks like to be at a maximum of fifty five percent humidity, so they're bringing in an H X specialist to see if they can figure out how can we do something about the basement. But now we have humidifiers that we purchased last year, we're just running dehumidifiers and emptying them several times a day. Um, you know, it works ish, but it's not a long term solution. So, um, I wish Jeff was here to thank, but he and Ross have been putting in a lot of time trying to figure it out and are also working for us. And then, unfortunately, we had a cold in the library early today, because we never really had power since two thirty this afternoon, and that revealed to us that the generator is not powering the elevator. We're going to be emergency light in our stairwell, and he also knows all about it and is working on it, but just. Every time you have a little, you learn something that one of them, right, so that's where we're at.
Yep.
Any questions?
I don't have questions, I just have a comment, I've been reaching my little guy to your program every, and, yes, you guys are doing a great job, and. The, the attendance is wonderful, all the families are really funny, so just keep up the great work.
Thank you very much, I'll pass it on to Emma, she puts in the hours with kiddo.
Mm-hmm. All seconded. Sure.
All right, last month Lisa and I attended a regular training in Rice Lake, it's kind of an annual thing that they do each May or June, and I did some really good training this year on both elections, and addressed some of the S V D stuff with the nursing homes, sending deputies there. And some training on the alcohol licensing, because the state issued all new forms this year right before licensing time, so. I actually had the opportunity, they had a couple agents up in Rice Lake, and one of the guys that had been answering questions, come and talk to us personally, they are all new revamping of their divisions, so. The guy that we used to ask questions to is now going to the dinner hall, and so we're a little bit in limbo, they even start handling that right now. Um, we have sent our liquor license applications, all the businesses, the applications have come back, um, we have most of that stuff compiled, and it will be going into the paper next week to be addressed at the next council meeting for voting on for liquor licenses. I also was granted a P S C report extension for the beginning of June and some of the beginning of May. So I got all of the stuff I worked in, made everything to the auditors, they got our report compiled, and now it's all online for the publisher access. There may be some changes that they have to update as they finish our audits, but for now, it's at least out there. So I've also been working with them on getting a lot of audit things, they send me emails, see what they need, and I give it on over to them, so that they, our audit completed, so they are well on the way to getting that done, so hopefully it's on December next. Getting that done, so hopefully it's on December next, this time. Um, let's see. Um, I've been hearing the, with the weather, it's been an increase in zoning permits, so. We've been entering into that warm season, so I've got a lot of zoning permits coming across my desk, building permits, obviously, building instructor. A lot of the building projects also need a zoning permit, so I had an uptick in that and things like mobile food vendors and things like that. And then I have been working on getting our banking accounts reconciled for this year, I've made it through January so far, but we're on our way, January's the worst month to do. Because it's tax season, so we're on our way for the general fund to have it right, so any questions?
So just to check in, that means that um, we're far ahead of where we were with the audit in the last couple of years.
Yes, we're ahead on the reconciliations compared to the last year, the annual audit, so we're doing good.
It just lets everybody do their job better, making it done as well.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
So, um, the deputy is Sam is graduating. So, uh, he's currently training with Paris. And this is week two for him, uh, Cole Stan, another recruit, he's um. Getting through, I'm finished up his background packet, he did his psyche evaluation. Friday, he's going for his drug test and physical, so we should be signing him on probably next week. Well, that'll be a seventy percent um, of the starting wages. We don't have to pay for any meals or anything, the fact that we can get them prior. To him starting, so there won't be no reimbursement from the state for that, but um, he understands that. So he should graduate the end of September. Uh, Lydia Brainbridge, Brainbridge, uh, she's our injured, she's her in Skywell, she's been here. Four days already, um, so it's great, how she's doing some paperwork and getting some. Uh, domestic packets and stuff put back together that are kind of available on, and then once um, she gets. Uh, I got her two shirts coming, when she gets her shirt, she's gonna start going to call the businesses to get people their information, because they know we're behind on that. So, um, that's what she's gonna be working on and then. We're gonna have like an music on the river and some of the other events in town. So, he doesn't cost anything, but he's a lot of help, so it's a good deal for us, but. She won the college at Brager, Minnesota, so she's in her, she'll be starting with her second year uh, this fall. In criminal justice, so. Um, we didn't have a lot of big cases this month, but we did handle four hundred and sixty six calls for service. We had uh, issued thirty seven citations. Uh, incidents with our bigger cases, we had thirty nine. Uh, the girl was doing the D M B, they had party registrations, twelve renewals and no time paid, so that's probably like a lost amount. So far this year, but there's bill hand on every day. Uh, officer proudly attended um, vehicle or emergency vehicle operations and control training as an instructor, so. He and I were instructors and were in the training for pretty much. All departments except for Saint Croix, Presser. Osceola and then the Sheriff's Department, but we're gonna have that next week on the twelfth. So there'll be an holiday event for me and Steve. Uh, Officer Harris just attended a new service training that dealt with child abuse investigations. Our department also held a fireman's training for our patrol contest. Um, and Sam actually qualified with his handgun for the department, so he's good to go. Friday, we got a special event going on because when they did the four K. Children's registration at the school, we did a coloring contest, we got three colorings back. So we're taking off three for a squad car ride and then for somebody's three one running leaves, so that's kind of a fun event. And um, to the last thing, uh, we just pulled policies, we actually are like the process of where we finally released ten policies. So now every week to two weeks, we'll be releasing about ten policies every, so. We are making way with that, so there's a few more that we have to go through yet to finalize, but we are at ease releasing, so. Any questions?
It's not a race.
Because for the building, there's our storm shelter and if we got handicap people. Now we know that that elevator is not working, so thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Cause we were really depending on getting handicapped and successful and getting people down there, so, um, thanks. Too bad it wasn't working, but glad I know now, thank you. Um, so long, today we have a hundred and eighty nine for Ryan versus Spatter and fire calls. Um, we did get our airboat back, uh, took it out for a spin Monday night, uh, everything's running good. Um, so everything's loaded back in and airwork good to go. Um, lot quieter, so anybody who's not looking really at it. Batter truck report, um, we still have area seals to get put in, um, for the ladder, um, once we get those. Perita is gonna be coming in and putting them in and then that should be all the repairs that will need to be done on that. Um, fire committee did say, I mean, retired or twenty three years old, the fire committee said we had to wait till next year in order to get those tires to put on that truck. Um, so it's been, uh, once that's done, then that truck will. It's been on all our truck fires, for I S O has gone on all truck fires. I told the guy, we have to, oh, if it's available for car, car accidents, whatever, take that truck out because that's our security. I mean, there's not, there's very little us to push that truck when we're doing education or whatever, so. Um, June nineteenth and the twenty third, which leaving myself be attending the Wisconsin State Firefighters or Fire Chiefs uh, conference. Um, so unfortunately, I won't make the next city council meeting. But I'll be here in thought, right? I know that school is all rigged up and we are gonna have a meeting with uh. Patty, Jeff, uh, police chief, and, and uh. Discuss a little bit more on how we move out. Areas only, always moving out by night, I don't know. Um, but we'll find a place out there to let them off, um, and last to talk to, um. What's his name, Steve? About getting uh, permission to use a school now.
Permission? I got the commission, so.
And so, um, this was gonna go out there and look and find a. Preferred area for that, and I'm gonna be a spitter.
Yeah, it'll be less parking.
Yeah, so I know last year was really helped out a lot when the um, police department did the traffic control of all the firing stuff out there, but yeah, we'll talk about it. And last I happened, we did get together or get to get a good call. Talk to my agent, talk to Dr. Fox, talk to, um. Mister Anderson, we will be having airport meeting on the eighth of July. Um, on aircraft crashes, fires, everything else like that, um, with some of the, some of their. Guys are pretty excited to. All the planes and we're excited to see the planes. Yeah, so it's all good, so.
Good evening, I am also reading one of them because I claim had access to my intro this afternoon. Which is why my hair looks like this. For my first full month, um, doing this job was pretty busy. Um, I had events for the entire summer and fall turned into travel in Wisconsin and visit Wisconsin. That had to be a school event to be on those websites, but I don't see any like that being approved. And then, um, I had met with Taylor a couple of times, so I now have access to the city post site. And now with sign, um, so I'll be able to post on those events. And I'm currently working on making sure that all our events on our city websites match up with the community blog website. So that everything is on both sites and we have the same information and correct information on hold. Um, and every announcement stage has been created on social media and already just created a few followers and I do see some comments. That have that, so I think people are enjoying that page. Um, I had some people had messaged me on that page with just questions about things going on in town. And one said that they're really appreciating, they're just having an answer on their first stop and not being passed off a few times. Um, before they answered for what they were looking for. I met with Paul Schaefer so that we can discuss upcoming opportunities and who will handle what. In terms of some things in town, um, a video author has been here to do some drone footage. Um, so that we can start on a movie promotional video. So it would be partial drone footage and partial still footage that I've been going on you doing, so that will have a government commercial need. Um. We have started work on that increase prices, right, so I expect, because it's the second annual, that will be. Quite a bit easier in top this year for that. I've been working with the farmers running managers, uh, increasing their dates, um. And getting something straightened out where we have a new market manager this year for the farmers markets, so they're just kind of getting, um. Some sense by, um, from last season, so the first day of the month target will be this coming Saturday. Uh, that only open on Monday and because next Tuesday is the second Tuesday of the month. They'll also be at Tuesday Tunes at my local, we're gonna have pop up markets the second and from Tuesdays at Tuesday Tunes. I have been communication with the lady, which is a listener, uh, that print and our minds are a good feature. I'm secure having Civic Media in town Friday, June fourteen for two live shows. From the show, um, Civic Media, uh, is in charge of living in England. And we have a show that's popular in the southern part of the state, the time all the show. And sometimes actually going to travel to England and do a show two times one from England that day. Um, and then we'll review and we'll talk about some of the things for angry and the public is invited that it can be in the park that day. To listen to the live show as well. Uh, I have nominations for feature the Giants for Sunday, Music on the River and Newbury Fall Festival. Formally in your state, sometimes you'll see that hop up on your social media. Um, so an application is in for us to get featured on that. Um, I, Patty mentioned the rev program and I'm going to do the rev program with Patty. So I'm looking forward to that, I think they will maybe work tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, I applied for a volume grant, creative community grant, farmers' money promotion grant and then our town grant. Those will all be for recreational purposes with, um, spinning up maybe murals in towns, things like that. Um, we do have August coming for the mural on the side of the half of the river building in just a couple of weeks. Um, I've started designing a lot's angry program. Um, which I'll share with you in detail some other time and I applied for angry to be a citizens institute on world design. Um, it's a program that runs every two years, um, by the National Endowment for the Arts. And it seeks rural communities, people, um, places fifty thousand people or less. To offer the citizens institute on world design, uh, with over thirty years of leadership in world design, it is perfect for. For greater community, um. Creative communities, excuse me, and they have two little programs that you can qualify for. One is a world design workshop and four communities will be chosen. It's gonna be similar to design angry except for it won't cost us anything. Um, it's, it's a grant program, um, and then they'll need with community members to see how community members feel. The future of angry should look. And then the other one that you can qualify for is a designer in Concord with fifteen to twenty other communities. Uh, which is a cloud virtual, um. I think I probably missed some things, but that's, um, in short, what I did in the month. I think June will be much physical. So, does anyone have any questions?
Great work.
Thank you.
That's a lot to do.
I got a question, did you? You know, um. You know, in, I'm not your first month, it just changed your bird, for all your bird. Um, I think the biggest thing that I wanted to put in the door is, is. Way to keep people as, as much as we can and, and that's saying that has. And, you know, um, we've got a good reason for that, you know, and it's so. Um, recreation opportunities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That would be good, you know, that puts a lot, you might get that, but.
No, absolutely, that's what I'm here to do and that's what I'm actually about to do.
And make sure you reach out to different organizations.
Absolutely, so on the evening announcement stage, um, maybe that's what we've been doing. Is reaching out women's club, ladies club, anyone here in angry that, um, some fundraisers that are very. Said that's what it's there for, so, um, there's, I don't want to lose you know what else to write. Because, you know, um, we would post anything extreme, but any groups in town, fundraisers, things like that, um. Policy, like doing here, anything like you'd like to post on that.
I'm, I just have just a comment and since you're the expert. Seeing as there seems to be a lot of interest, but also a lot of confusion with the public. Amongst the uh, music in the park from Tuesdays to Wednesdays. And then, um, the brat feet, in my meat market. They adjust the brat feet schedule to line up with the change in music schedule, so I'm sure you're already aware of that. And I don't know the best way, um, you know, to address that, it's just kind of try to steer, keep steering people to. Uh, the uh, new social media site you started.
Right, and then sort of reasons, just so we know how to switch from Wednesdays to Tuesdays. Um, I'm showing you this because of women's golf league, because that's on Wednesday. And then some of, um, bars and restaurants in the area have moved to seven nine Wednesday, it's actually moved sometimes. So we didn't want to be a competition in the city, um, with any of our business owners. So Tuesday was the one night that was kind of alone in town, that there wasn't golf leagues or big statues. At some of the businesses, that we thought maybe if we had music on that night. That we could bring people into groups business on Tuesday nights. That we thought maybe if we had music on that night, that we could bring people into groups business on Tuesday nights. For others in restaurants where it would take the slower minute for them. So, uh. That's to be the first one was stolen on which kind of takes care of itself because of weather, they'd be set once tonight. And, um, so that's why we'll pick up because they started at noon. Uh, and then next week, uh, our first artist will be the gift box, um, from clearly. We tried this year as well to keep it as liberal as we could for entertainments. So we have a wide variety and they're almost all really liberal people. And then on the third, uh, Tuesday, each month it's going to be children's programming. Because that is the Friday music on the river, so people will already have access to music in the park that week. So we're focusing on children's programming on that third. So that is why there are often changes with music program.
Thank you.
Those two should be case, this came from one of the movies.
Finance.
So it says. What can be placed to adjust our show rates?
Yes, so. Basically, it'd be a more in-depth study that would look at how we could look at our user rates depending on like. Residential versus commercial with different users, basically. So it breaks it down on a more case-by-case type of a basis. For the types of meters we have, instead of applying the same charge across the board. So it would look to see. If it would actually benefit us to do it a different way based off of our different infrastructure. Our different businesses versus residential.
Cost of six thousand dollars and it was recommended.
By the finance committee, yes.
So, um, Roger just whispered to. So this had previously been discussed at some council and at that time there was no action taken. Finance committee of the state, which is Sarah and Rogers and Chair myself. And, uh, we kicked it around quite a bit. Um, uh, the thing that I think, uh, led to the recommendation was that it has been. A very long time since that has been analyzed. And that this would be an appropriate time to analyze it since we have the new plant construction and they're going to be. Rates, uh, new rates implemented. Um, also the cost is six thousand dollars. And given the size and the scope of the project, um, we can, uh, probably roll that in. With our other financing and the grants and the low interest loans and everything that we will be. Applying for, um, with the, uh, to finance a plant. Um, I'm not a concern that I wanted to be sure that our residential users. Aren't subsidizing our, our industrial users. We don't know, we can't predict the future how that's going to come out. That might come out just the other way around. That it might shift some to the residential users. We hope not, but. If this at least we can reassure people we did our due diligence. Uh, when we did this and that it is accurate. And, um, we have, uh, done a study on it. So the community made the recommendation of the board to do this.
I'm sure I'd like to make a mention that the city approved the phase two sewer rate case, uh. At the cost of six thousand dollars with Ellis and Associates.
Is that a second? I have a question. Does it face two or face three?
He calls it phase two, but it shows the thing as phase three. But he was calling it a phase two and I didn't give any further clarification from him for the why the difference was. But he was calling it phase two when he talked about it, but it's highlighted in the packet as the phase three size. And I did verify with him that it is that six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So phase two slash three.
I think. My second name.
Okay, now let's do another discussion.
My second one was for Patty's discussions.
Um, one other thing, you guys may need to still move forward with the across-the-board rate increase. At the next meeting in order to get that into the, uh, the newsletters in July in order to go into place in October. So this won't impact that one, but it would be for future.
Spending the money, you know, rates are. But, and it's not gone. Or, or significantly for a long time, so. That's just where we're at right now. Now, having said that, and that's why. You know, I think I get excited about, you know, additional. Uh, housing and things like that because all of that actually reduces the per unit rate. And that's what, what, uh, you know, we. Reach and certainly that you plan will have capacity, so. Um, so yeah, we're going to have some significant rate increases here. Um, but if everything works out, then we're moving forward. You know, the projection. Really well solved.
Any more discussion? Before we say aye? We're not going to get a PSC simple rate case for water rates, uh, which is something that we do fairly regularly.
That's on for a number of years, um, so. So finance committee, uh, made the recommendation that the city should do a simple rate case this year. Um, we would likely use an outside company to help with that based off of the discussion in the past. I can't say for certain, that'll be up to you, but at least this way, if you guys, um. Say that it should be done, we can look into if we should be doing it ourselves or if we should be having an outside company doing it and then bring it back to you for that final. Approval at a future meeting. Hopefully either the next one or the one after that, because I think it has to be filed in August to do that and it's like I live here too.
So. I think too, rather than correct, I think I'm right. We had talked about it in 2017. Those last seven such rate cases have been done. And given the guys, uh, simple rate cases, either approved or they don't approve it, it's based on your rate of return, it's one sheet of paper. And you pull a page out of your PSC report and put the data and they kind of instantly tell you whether that qualifies. So in looking at inflation, uh, that has, uh, come on the band the past couple of years. And even running pressure as well. It kind of really was, it's, it's a, it's just a matter of kind of keep up with, with more inflationary of person. And if we have been using this, you know, every year since twenty seventeen, you know, that's seven years ago. We potentially would be looking at, uh, the increase for the new plan. Have been, you know, maybe seventeen percent lower. Than what we're looking at now because we would have been having a very slow creeping increase instead larger.
Quite of information. This is water though, that sewer for the plants, so.
Yes, and so, um, thank you for bringing that up, Taylor, because, um, something that the city could do. If they choose to, is that whatever rate, uh, the PSC recognizes for water is also applied to sewer. At the same time, that doesn't have to go through the PSC, we can just do that if we want to do that. And then it applies to both sides of the utility piece, uh, for inflationary, um, prevention, so.
I, I think it was a good, good opportunity to, um. Have that discussion looking. Down the road and, and looking forward, you know, in, instead of, you know, have no increases go. Six, seven years and then all of a sudden you have a big increase. You know, um, fact is costs at least. Tend to go up every year to some degree. Um, and, and so, you know, is this something we, we need to consider going forward? When we do our increases and doing in much less. Or smaller increments.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's kind of the thought process.
This is kind of proof that you, you, we shouldn't just coast along.
Right.
We should, should be actively managing these things so that there isn't. You can't, you can't do that with wastewater because you can't accumulate funds ahead of the project, but. For anything else, it, it makes a lot more sense for us to, to have an active management of the rates.
It was the cost to do this.
There is, I don't believe there is any cost. Just go on the PC webs, the PSC website with your annual report. And enter the data. It's, it's really the kind of separate case because it's pretty simple and pretty user friendly to be able to do and there's no charge for it. It's not like where, when you do a complex rate case and you have to hire your, an auditing firm or somebody to come in and do all that for you.
With, with that being the case, I'm just wondering the way it goes and been done for the last six or seven years.
I have no idea.
To be clear, it was probably six or seven years before, six or seven years ago too. It's not been. Basis that I'm believing. I don't.
Beg to differ with you. I feel like it probably should be done.
Yeah, it probably should have, but, yeah, we have not done that on a regular basis or anything.
Just moving forward.
Yes.
And who would be in charge of making sure that that happens every year now? Is that something that is finance that was being driven down or?
I would think administrator would be able to. Direct the staff and work with the staff and make sure it gets done.
Okay.
No, all of you should push your mics back because we don't have. It's, you know, and our quality buttons aren't doing anything right now. Mm-mm, not on those. On these we do, but not on those.
I don't think anyone's moving.
No. Well, indeed, well.
Well, given all that information, I think it benefits us to do it. Water rates.
Second to that motion. Motion's made and seconded to approve the PSC simple rate case for water rates, um. The only thing I would caution us is that regardless of how that comes back. We do two or three increases in one year. Cut your oak tree down so they're in a place for a noose to go over, so. Well, this is one rate, it's not sewer.
Yeah.
Uh, do you think that makes a difference? It's not as big a deal. Well, it is bigger because that affects the sewer rates also. And we will already be in. Something that we need to do, just that. Um, just because it comes out and says that doesn't necessarily mean at the next meeting we need to raise the rates. I'm seeing it also. We need to stay on top of it on a consistent basis, those are consolated things.
Yeah. It's an important data point.
Well, I think one point is that this is. So that you can decide if, well, you can see if it qualifies, what that might be, and then it's still coming back here for that discussion. So we're not deciding to implement, we're deciding to pursue the information.
We're just taking the next step.
The information.
Yes. But, but I think we will, we need to have the discussion of. How do we cover our costs?
Mm-hmm.
And do you, do you do it every seventh year and, and really jack it up? Or, uh, do you do it bit by bit and? No one likes increases, period. We, we all get that, so.
Water is restricted, so you can only do certain amounts.
Yep, that's a good point, yeah.
And you know that the council probably doesn't want to look at applying what the PSC may or may not give us for water. The council may not want to necessarily apply that to sewer to, because we got a lot of financing and construction and. Everything else to shake out and maybe that needs to shake out before we would, if, we would make any considerations there. It's just kind of my thoughts.
Are you ready for a question?
Yes.
All in favor of the. PSC simple rate case for water rates signify by saying aye. Ours, so ordered. Resolution. Uh, oh, six, twenty twenty-four petitioning the state. The Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid. And this is, comes from the Airport Commission. And it's to get us in line for, uh, funding. For down the road a little bit, but for funding for a. First of all, a snow removal bill or snow. Removal storage building to. Place to put the grader, payloader, et cetera, anything for that.
This is everything here listed as all of our wishes. It doesn't mean we're going to have.
Right.
So.
Also, it was something that we need to, uh, approve so that we can get that improvement aid. Uh, started, I believe the money is pretty much all there. Um, you know, it just depends on if they approve, what they approve for us to do for the size of our airport, so. So.
I make a motion to approve resolution zero six, twenty twenty-four petitioning, petitioning the Secretary of Transportation. For Airport Improvement Aid.
Second it.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the, uh, petition. For Airport Improvement Aid. Any further discussion? Wanted to ask the, uh, fuel system had been a problem. I don't know how recently, but fairly recently, and if that's been corrected or if that has to wait. For this to come through. Well, um, we had a, uh. Um, when we only electric came and fixed an electrical problem that we had underground. Um, and I think we paid their phone company for. But I don't know if they put that, did they put that in yet? Did you get a bill for the phone company?
No, they, they were on track to do it, so.
Contacted and agreed to do it and we've gotten the price from them to put. A fiber line over to the pump so that we'll. Have a direct, direct line, which has been a problem all along. No matter how hard they boost it, we can't get, uh. Good signal all the time out from the pilot center over to the gas pumps, so.
Okay, it's important to use a hard line.
Oh, yes, absolutely, so. So it's pretty much in the works, uh, if it hasn't been done already and I don't know what, if it has or not, so. It's just going to those critical things. And, you know. All right. Is there a motion?
I believe Fran made the motion and Roger seconded. So we just need to.
Call the question.
I don't hear Roger, I guess. Um, all in favor of the motion? To. Petition for Airport Improvement Aid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours. So ordered. Resolution thirteen twenty-four.
So. Yeah, I can, I can talk about this because I asked to have it added. Um, so since I believe January, I have been working with a group of community members. On a childcare task force. Um, it has been. Mostly fact finding, um, and at this point we have looked at a lot of different options. We've looked at buildings that already are established, we've looked at city property, we've contacted every church in the surrounding area. We have talked with the school, um, we have pretty much covered every base that we can think of. Uh, and it is that tasks, task forces perspective. That if the city is going to address childcare, we need to look at building something as a city. Um, and. Um, and because none of our established buildings are in in a structure that would work well without significant remodeling to meet state requirements for childcare. Um, and all of the churches that we contacted are not interested in doing some sort of childcare. Uh, so, that being said, uh, we feel it's time for the city to create an actual ad hoc committee to start addressing this issue and looking at costs and plans and things that we could potentially do to address the issue. Uh, so that's where this comes from. We're definitely at the point where we're just stalling in meetings and there's not really a way for us to move forward without city involvement.
Good job, I might add.
It's been a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone have questions about what we've been up to?
Yes, there's still been interest by the people that are looking at potentially building the dog park location to have a childcare center in there. Or is that too far out to really consider?
Um, I haven't spoken to them aside from when we spoke in the meeting. I know Patty brought it up, meeting with them. Um, our task force feels that that property would be ideal for the childcare facility. If we were to build one simply because of its proximity to the school, it would be very easy for parents to pick up kids at school and the childcare center drop them off. Um, that being said, we don't want to tread on any of what the school is already doing because their childcare program is doing a great job, but they're at capacity. And even when they add on, um, this summer, they're still going to be at capacity because they have such a long waitlist. Um, and that's just the documented waitlist because when I was talking to Dr. Duffler, he said that a lot of families call to find out if they can get on the waitlist. They hear how long the waitlist is and they don't even go through the process to then get on the waitlist because it's already, you know, twenty to thirty kids deep at any given time. So, um, back to your original question, I have not spoken to them beyond what we all heard in that meeting.
I, I have a question. I mean, I kinda asked the question, you know, is this the city's role? Or, and I'm gonna ask the question, is it the school's role to provide for daycare?
Um, well, I, I can only give you my opinion, which is that there are very few in-home daycares in our area. Those in-home daycares are, are, they're not able to meet the needs of our community. We're looking at bringing in housing. We have a huge industrial park that is sitting empty. And we can bring in housing and we can bring in those jobs. But people have kids and their kids have to go somewhere safe during the day. And I am very fortunate that my employer allows me to work from home and have my child at home with me. But there are lots and lots and lots of families that are now down to one income because they have nowhere safe to send their kids during the day. So, if we're going to address the issue of housing and address the issue of employment, we also have to address the issue of childcare because it's a trifecta and they all impact each other. So I'm, I'm very passionate about the fact that it should be our responsibility to try to address this issue because our community right now is not addressing it. And maybe that's because they're not capable of addressing it. I, I don't know. But there is not enough grassroots stuff happening to address our current need.
I totally agree. We, we, we need to do something. It's just.
I, I think if you read the municipality magazine over the last twelve months, you've seen that issue addressed several times. Um, and there are other communities that are doing exactly the same thing that we are. Uh, some of them are a little further ahead. They've actually started uh their business. And I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not, the idea is not for the city to run the daycare. Not to provide the teachers, et cetera, et cetera, to do that. But daycare, the, the nature of the beast is that if you want to set something up like that and run it, um, there are, I, I know because I just became a great grandpa. And uh, the uh, the childcare costs are over a hundred dollars a week in Woodbury per child.
We know a lot of families that pay more for childcare every month than they do for their mortgage. Uh, that being said, we do have some established childcare providers in other communities that would be interested in running a facility if we were to build one here in town. But they do not have the financial capacity to build the building themselves. So, if we were to get to that point, we would have probably a renter for a while and hopefully we could eventually have that group purchase the building from the city or so- something. That's a lot further down the road, but most people who are establishing a childcare center, if they've been doing it for a while, they only have the capacity to build one building at a time. Uh, and some of the groups that we're looking at are in the process of already doing new builds in other communities. So they don't have the financial capacity to do multiple community builds at the same time. Uh, so.
I have a question for council. Is there any opportunity in C D V G programs for community improvement programs like this that could be used, considered an enhancement to the community by providing um, facility for someone to run um as a business? You know, i- i- an incubator, if you wanna call it that. But is, is there, is there a possibility that that could fit with some creativity?
C D V G is maybe pushing it. Uh, we still on that. That's been dealing with jobs. But could potentially be other funding sources. It's just a matter of what does it look like?
Yeah, and I think, you know, you, you, you said, you know, there's no grassroots. Sometimes it takes somebody to, to start pushing something, you know, and it will, or to just somebody get like you're doing and raise your hand and say, we should be able to do something and you'll, you know, maybe we'll find that there are enough people who are interested in saying, yeah, that's something we could get behind.
We've been looked at a play area, you know, like what they have in Lock. You know, where you could have a play area with a daycare and then rent, you know, they can rent out space and.
Yeah, but you, you, you're on the right track. We've talked about it before that. You can't um expect somebody to come here to have a business if they don't have a way to attract people to work here without housing, without daycare, without a place, so.
Well, and I.
Let them, they, they are not separate anymore.
Right, and I am the person by default that represents the young people in our community, just because of my age. That's why Rick was like, ew, you should do the childcare, um, which is, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I just, I, I love Amory. I grew up here. I want it to continue to be a place where young people can thrive and build their families. And right now, those young people need our help. So, that is why I'm asking for the ad hoc committee so that we can start moving in a more official capacity.
I would make the motion that we pass resolution thirteen dash two zero two four.
I will second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, I think we're probably two weeks away from creating that because we need to have, uh, if we're going to put the status as committee status. We need to have a, more similar to what we did for finance and, and uh, et cetera. So that they have a scope and elect officers and we know who's gonna, I'm not suggesting that the committee be any different. But uh.
Uh, we, we can have an ad hoc ordinance.
So this would fall under your ad hoc ordinance.
We already have an ordinance. We did that.
Be an actual committee created under ordinance. It would be an ad hoc created.
Yes, but we still need to officially appoint people and establish a meeting time and some of those things.
We'll look at the ad hoc thing and, and.
Yeah, my understanding, ad hoc is kind of a special projects.
Yes.
And, and so, you know, yeah, we need to, if we wanna start making progress here, we, we need to get some people um committed to it, I guess.
You know, I think it's to be able to actually have the um cachet of the city to be able to say, we're looking for funds, we're looking for funding, we're looking for, so once you exist for real.
I have some questions or discussion, just to kind of get up to speed. And this, so I have, I absolutely positively support that there's a need for that here. And that that is important and certainly has um monumental value. Question that I have is, I'm really interested in what other communities are doing because one of the things as a municipality, we are not supposed to do is, we are not supposed to compete with private business and private enterprises. And so I'm really interested in how other communities are handling that aspect of it. And, you know, as well as, um, you know, I, I was glad to hear about that you had checked about places that do that do it and how can we get them here and their expansion going one at a time and things like that. So that, that's just, I guess, what input I had on it.
And I think Fran, the reason at this point is because there are no other people that are interested.
You know, all over.
And that's, and getting back to Roger's question, that is why the school district initially opened Clubhouse because they saw the need and, yes, they do make revenue off of it, but the, that's not why they decided to open it. They decided to open because there's the need. And there are in-home daycares in Amory, don't get me wrong. But the state recently changed the legal requirements related to infants. And infants are considered any child under the age of two. So if you have a family in your in-home daycare that has multiple kids in that two-year gap, then you are using up all of your infant spots. And that's where we're starting to see the real issue in our community is there's no infant spots. So you, if you're thinking about getting pregnant, have to get on a waitlist before you're even pregnant to get daycare for when you have that baby, you know, a year later. So, I mean, there, there's a lot of factors, but that's why we're at this point because there isn't any private business to compete with. Because if there was, then we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be going down this road. Um, and we looked at some other communities are doing really creative things, um, like trying to do multi-age care. So they have childcare established in like nursing homes or things like that. So the elderly and the kids can play together. And there's a lot of different avenues we looked at, but for our community, none of them really makes sense. So.
Here I say community center, the city owns that building, right? Is there, but it's not big enough to co-op.
No, and.
Things together.
And the other thing is that there, for a, for a childcare center in the state of Wisconsin, there are very strict requirements for what that building looks like. And like, for example, the community center, they would have to have separate bathrooms specifically for the kids that the adults could not use. So there's, there's all kinds of things with all of our buildings that if we remodeled like crazy, then we would meet requirements. But then at that point, you're spending so much money that why aren't you building a building that's designed?
Expansion there too. I mean, that's big enough, you know, that there's, there might be room for expansion. But that's for all of you guys to sort out.
I, I get nervous with that building because every year there are issues. So these are all things that the committee can look into, but um, that's where we're at. And I think the community should know that we've been working on it. We are very aware that there's a need. Um, so.
Okay. Call the question. All those in favor of resolution thirteen twenty twenty four establishing officially the ad hoc committee on childcare signify by saying aye. Congratulations, you're official now.
That's a congratulations.
I just uh have to say Michaela has put, has taken a hold of this and really put together a well-oiled machine. So I'm anticipating things will go smoothly uh as we move along this. And number twelve, electronic waste disposal proposal.
Okay, recycling committee has um request, we'd like authorization to host an electronic waste disposal day for Amory that would be in conjunction with uh Po County Electronic Waste Program. The county has theirs set for the seventeenth of October and they go from one to five. And we would, um, in, in discussion with Tina, who helped us a lot with our work on that committee, um, to meet the following week, which would be the twenty fourth on a Thursday. And we would like to be able to use the South Industrial Park because that would be, uh, you know, good access. We can get people to drive in, drive out. Um, we'll have to site a uh, a truck, a trailer there. And we will also need to have um, a forklift for the afternoon. And I, if we could get that from the city to load the pallets and things like that. So by, by following them by one week, that gives us a chance to shadow their uh day. And we'll be able to figure out how they do it. Um, this is the same company that is um taking the e waste for the county. So it's the same, no charge. Um, we're not going to just say Amory only, we're just saying it's available.
You want like a dump truck? Is that what you're thinking?
No, they'll, they'll drop a trailer. So we just need a forklift. They'll drop a trailer and pallets and, you know, the galeen boxes and things like that. So we need the space, so authorization for the date, the space and some support. We will, the, the community will start looking for volunteers. Um, we might talk to the school for some strong interested people from some of the programs that might be interested in, in uh doing some volunteer always for their resumes for, for college too. So that's, that's our request. Seventeenth of October, um. Twenty fourth of October, seventeenth is, is the counting, twenty fourth of October, in using the South Industrial Park.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding uh from the committee meeting that this is gonna be like residential only. But it's residential only, it's not businesses to show up with a dozen monitors or, or that type of thing because that type of scale, we would have to maybe charge something and then that.
Well, we wouldn't have the capacity for it.
Yeah, a whole different thing. So it's for residence, or residential.
Stay at or what kind of restrictions are you looking at?
The only restrictions, it's no appliances, um, residential only. So it's going to be printers, computers. All V C Rs, um, you know, stuff like that. It's, uh, we'll follow the same advertising that the county uses, which does a good job of identifying what we will accept and what uh we won't. So we're looking at it as a good opportunity to highlight what the county's doing and give everybody here a, a second chance to take care of. I am making him that a motion to use uh the South Industrial Park for Electronic Waste Disposal Day on the twenty fourth of October.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to uh proclaim October twenty fourth as a recycling day in conjunction with uh the county's program. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Sword.
Yep.
Moving along. And number thirteen, closed session. Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, police officer, police department office manager and city hall staff. Considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee, restriction or responsibility. Need a motion.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Hi.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, closed session.